This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Ready?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'd like to call the June 8, 2023 Regular Meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:30. May I have a motion to approve the May 4, 2023 Board of Education Special Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Anyway.
Sorry.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the May 11, 2023 Board of Education Special Meeting Minutes?
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Approval of the... May I have a motion to approve the May 11, 2023 Board of Education Regular Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions?
One extension.
Thank you. So moved. Okay. Board of Education Student Representative report the last one that you will have to do. Congratulations.
Thank you. So, um, we don't have a lot, but our senior picnic was a success. Our senior prank was received by the Cheetah Body, which is a mariachi band that followed Dr. Galli.
I saw that on Facebook. That was pretty good.
That's pretty good.
Finals are underway as students finish up classes and get ready for the end of the year, and graduation is slated for the 15th, and hopefully it can be outside.
Okay. I was informed you did some sort of fundraiser?
Oh, yeah. Our National Honor Society in conjunction with More Than Likes held an ALS fundraiser for Ms. Chromiak, a previous teacher at the middle school, and we raised $1,500 that we'll be able to send her through in addition to letters by previous students of her wishing her the best.
That's spectacular.
That's awesome.
Great job. I very appreciate that. The Board also appreciates you taking the time to be here every month and going over student activities that we would not hear about otherwise. So, thank you for that. And you can... If you'd like to tape off, you can tape off and go enjoy your... Find a few days of high school. Yeah, actually. Take your name plate.
Oh, yeah.
Your mouth out of the dashboard of your car.
Thank you.
It's a parting gift. You're all set. Okay. Now it's time for a public comment for non-agenda items. I'd like to go over a couple of things before I allow anybody to come up to the table. As you come up to the table, please just make sure you give us your name and write down your name and address on the paper. The other thing I would like to remind everybody that public comment is different for everybody. Everybody has a particular view of any particular subject that you may or may want to talk about. Public comment is to be addressed to the Board. It is not to be addressed person to person. We're not here to argue. We're not here to be divisive. We are here to state opinion on whatever your opinion is, and that's fine. In the two years that I've been on the Board, we have never told anybody that they cannot speak on a certain subject, and I'm not about to start that today. But it will be civil. It will be civil, because if it is not, it will end. So with that, please get started. Say whatever you like, and just remember those couple of civility rules. That's all it is. Thank you. Yeah, you can go.
I'm gonna read my comments from my notes, if that's okay?
Yeah. Can you just please give us your name and if you could sign in? If you haven't, I think you did already, right?
I did.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll work it out.
Good evening, members of the Board and Superintendent Sturck. My name is Carrie Swanson. I live on Potter Road. I'm the parent of a seventh grader at North Haven Middle School. I'm also an academic librarian. I'm here this evening in support of LGBTQIA+ students, faculty, and staff in North Haven Public Schools. I'm here to express my concern that North Haven Public Schools are not doing enough to create a safe learning environment for all students. Last week, my seventh grader attended the pride flag raising event at the public library. It should have been a happy day celebrating all members of the North Haven community, and it was, until it wasn't. When the students who attended the event returned to the middle school, some of them were mocked by a large number of their fellow students in the cafeteria. North Haven Public Schools have been using PBIS since my now-18-year-old was a student at Montauk, possibly longer, and yet bullying and harassment, especially of LGBTQIA+ students, students of color, and students with disabilities, persists in North Haven Public Schools. It is clear to me that waiting until middle school to specifically address issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion is too late. If children are not learning to treat everyone with dignity, respect, kindness, compassion, and civility at home, then that needs to begin the moment they enter the classroom in our school district. The district needs to do more to intentionally and proactively address the way students treat other students who are different from them, because all of our children deserve to have a safe environment in which to learn, and right now, I do not feel that North Haven Middle School is a safe environment for all of our children. And it certainly isn't because they might have access to the Hunger Games or whatever other works of juvenile fiction are the book banning targets of the day. I'm also here as a librarian to say unequivocally in person that in alignment with the code of ethics of my profession, I support the freedom to read, and I vehemently oppose censorship. I believe that parents should be able to exercise their own discretion when it comes to reading materials that are outside of the curriculum. If they do not want their child to read non-curricular materials, that is their right. They do not, however, have a right to restrict what other people's children read, and they do not have a right to restrict what my children read. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick comment on that.
Sorry.
As far as book reading goes now, if there's a student or a parent of a student that doesn't want their child to read a particular book, all they have to do is ask. I mean, that's been pretty standard practice. Silby's been provided at the beginning of school year, so you can have an idea as the year progresses what your child or children will be reading and will be taught. So with that, take advantage of it, and if you see something you don't like, I mean, you're more than welcome to make a comment. But you can also take action by just addressing Mr. Sturck and asking for that change. That's all. Thank you.
Michelle Gileman, 26, Curtis Park. Good evening. I want to start again tonight by thanking all of you for the work you do. As I've said before, it's not easy, and it's completely voluntary and unpaid. It's obvious you aren't here because you want the best for our children. I have a few things I want to say before I get to the main reason why I'm here tonight. First, I know that there are people here to speak on both sides of an issue of whether or not it was appropriate for a pride event flyer to be sent home as an attachment in an elementary's newsletter. I just would like to say that I personally appreciated the flyer. The newsletters often come with attachments about various events happening around town, and this should be no different. I hope that our principals will continue to use these newsletters to keep me informed about family-friendly events that are happening in town. Next, before I was in contact with you about transportation issues, I reached out about free meals for all. I was so grateful when you heard my request and ultimately decided to vote to extend free meals for all students by using excess cafeteria funds. That eventually ended, but then the state stepped up and made meals free again for all students until the end of the year. I cannot express enough how helpful this has been to my family. As a two-teacher household who lives modestly, we would not qualify under guidelines to receive free or reduced lunch. The guidelines do not take into consideration things like yearly medical expenses, childcare plus, or any other sort of expense. There are many kids who do not qualify for free or reduced lunch, but their families are still struggling to afford food in the current economy. I do not know if the state is considering extending this into next year, but I would love it if North Haven would consider a way to just make it what we do for our kids. I want to take a moment to make a public recommendation for Ms. Hannah Moran, who is currently a long-term substitute for my son's special education teacher at Montauk. Ms. Moran has been amazing, especially considering that she had my son on her caseload and when he went through this traumatic incident in March. The incident has caused a need for increased care for my child, including extra monitoring at school, numerous emails back and forth, and extra PBT coordination of adding summer services late in the year, and of course, more paperwork. She handled all of this like a seasoned pro. She is one above and beyond as a substitute. She has kept families updated on everything going on in her classroom and has planned and executed really meaningful lessons and events for her students. Let me tell you about one of them. During Autism Acceptance Month, she did an activity where students learned about famous autistic people who did amazing things, like Tim Burton. Did you know that he was autistic? Anyway, she sent me an email to say, as she was walking my son back to class and they were talking about the passages they had read, he said, "I wonder what I'll do with my autism. Maybe someday someone will write one of these papers about me." She was overjoyed by this and called it a "this is why I teach" moment. The email brought me to tears, because as a teacher, I know these moments, and I was so happy that my son was one of those moments for her as a new teacher. I also immediately knew that Ms. Moran is exactly the type of teacher we need in this world. She's the type of teacher you scoop up as quickly as you can. I would like to suggest that North Haven do just that and hopefully finds a place for her. Some more praise. I would like to again thank Mr. Sturck for everything he has continued to do following my son's incident. Every time I've had to contact him, which has been a lot, he has been super open and well-respected, always working in partnership and keeping his focus on what is best for our children. I'm happy to see that his contract extension is on the agenda tonight. I would also like to give my praise to Amanda Gabriel. While everyone here has been responsive and sensitive to the incident that occurred, Ms. Gabriel has gone above and beyond to support me and my family. It is my understanding that she may not receive the nomination for Board of Ed from the Democratic Town Committee this year, and that would be devastating. I need Ms. Gabriel, the residents and students need her, and this Board needs her. She comes to every single meeting fully prepared to discuss all topics on the agenda, right down to the very specific budget line items. She is a vocal advocate for all students in this town. She is not afraid to speak up for what is right, even if it isn't the popular opinion. And I know with 100% certainty that she will keep her promise to me of making sure we fix the transportation issues currently going on. I would hope that every person here sees her value as a member of this Board Ed and would support her nomination. If she is not nominated, I will support and push for a primary ballot day so that the people of this town can decide who they would like to be on the ballot in November. The people will speak for Mrs. Gabriel, as she speaks for us every month with a passion and dedication that is rarely seen. Which brings me to my main reason why I'm here. Call me the squeaky wheel if you must, but I need to keep transportation safety issues as a top priority for this Board. M&amp;J Bus Company has had numerous opportunities to make changes since my son was left alone on his van in March, but they continue to make mistakes. Big mistakes, unacceptable mistakes, still putting our children at risk of harm while on their watch. My son has attempted to be brave and take the van a couple times since the incident, but we had another setback in May with M&amp;J, and he is not wanting to go back on the van since. Understandably, we have a few days left to this school year, and I am making it work however I can, but I should not have to worry about how my son is going to get home. I should not have to make ultimate arrangements due to the incompetence of the bus company. I am proud of the way I've handled this incident over the past few months. I have tried to remain calm and collected and have spoken from a place of advocacy for change and accountability. That doesn't mean that I'm not mad, or angry, or upset, because I am very much so. This has affected me deeply, and it has been a daily struggle. And the fact that things haven't changed much, and my own child and others continue to have major issues with their buses and vans, is just not acceptable and is completely maddening. Please know that I am not here to bash the amazing drivers that work for this company. That is absolutely not the case. I am so grateful for our good drivers, but this company needs to be held accountable for these continued transportation issues. I know I already requested this to each of you in email, but I would like to publicly request that M&amp;J Bus Company returns to a meeting and answers questions for you and the public. I had hoped to see them here tonight. When they came in February, they said they are happy to come anytime. I feel as though they need to be here as soon as possible. The safety of our children needs to be an urgent matter. I would also like to request that the public continues to be updated on how we are ensuring our children's safety. This should be happening whether or not I am here to make a public comment. It should be on the agenda until things are fixed. Maybe a committee. There has been... Maybe a committee should be formed. I would absolutely volunteer my time to be part of that committee. There has been a lot of discussion about what this company might be doing to make things better, but I have yet to see any proof of these things... That these things are actually occurring. Has anyone here seen that proof? Have you seen the van attendance sheets? Have they updated you on equipment maintenance, like fixing cameras that don't work? Has anyone heard anything about your training? Do we know what is happening to attract quality drivers that will be able to follow the crucial safety policies and procedures that keep our kids safe? If the answer to these questions are no, then we are not doing enough to hold M&amp;J accountable. Unfortunately, we cannot just take their word that they are doing things better. They have proven over and over again how inept... I'm sorry. Over and over again that the safety of our children remains at risk. In my opinion, M&amp;J management has continued to show how inept they are and that they are unable to do their job well. We pay a huge amount of money for transportation, and we should not have to micromanage a company when they don't do their job correctly. If they can't do the job they were hired to do, then maybe we should hire someone who can. Thank you again for listening to my concerns. I truly hope to see meaningful changes very soon.
Thank you for that. Just a couple of quick comments in regards to M&amp;J. We were trying to get them here for the August meeting. Trying to get John back for that. In the meantime, we are addressing the contract and contract issues to see what our legal options are, if any. It is a very complicated... You wouldn't think it would be, but it's a very complicated web to try to get through contractually to make a change and then to have another company ready to take over. So it is... It's more of a process than one might think it would be, but believe me, we started... We had a special meeting on it last night. I had the Board here for hours, longer than they normally are here, and I appreciate that. Just so that you would know, and I'm telling you so you'll know, that we are trying to address that in the best possible way. It's just gonna take a little time, unfortunately. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name's Kristy, and I'm here for some positive feedback tonight, and I'll keep it short. I would like to thank our amazing language arts department, especially Melinda McKenna and Tracy Gimradella for putting together the list of all anticipated books for 2023 and 2024 for the middle school and high school. I have never received something like that before, and I appreciate it that it's transparent what our kids will be assigned to read. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Scott Friedman, 17 Cooper Road. I, again, as I have in the past, want to thank you all for your service on the Board and just speak loudly to say that my daughter is entering kindergarten, and I want to see her challenged in many ways by the books she reads, the people, and the topics that get discussed in her classroom. I was very thankful to see the Black History Month display when I was there for Kindergarten Orientation Day. It was incredibly more diverse in terms of subject matter, in terms of age, in terms of era than I had seen in the past when I'd been in schools and when I'd seen communications over. So, you know, I just wanted to thank you all. I also want to thank you for putting the pride celebrations in each of the newsletters. The flag raising last week was incredibly moving. The students who spoke, and there were a number of them who, you know, were sort of trying to get to the mic to say their piece, noted how symbolic it was for the town, how important it was for them personally. And I just want to reiterate that I think it's amazing that our town is doing this. I think it's important that the school system is supporting it, and I appreciate all the educators and administrators at every level who've made this possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. At this point, I'd like to head to the consent agenda. First, I would like to note the passing of former Superintendent Mary Jane Cheeheh, and also the passing of longtime first-grade teacher Carmela Parity. The resignation of Jen Stewart, Director of Student Services. The resignation of Sidney Hogan, TLS paraprofessional at North Haven Middle School. The resignation of Matt Malon, IT Computer Technician. And Hilar Arboleda, World Language Teacher at North Haven High School. May I have a motion to the consent agenda?
So moved.
You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Can we just thank you very much to the teachers who have served in this district and who are leaving? We appreciate all the work that has been done, and yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So moved. All right. The report of the Board of Education Chairperson. That would be me. Couple of things. One, I mentioned the bus briefly, that we are pursuing our options. Again, it's a little slower and more complicated than I would like it to be or any of us would like it to be. Excuse me. But it is moving forward, and hopefully we'll have some resolution sooner than later. And we have invited John to come back from M&amp;J to speak at the August meeting. In a couple of minutes, Amanda is going to be presenting a proposal for the Path to Belonging. She'll have a better description of it than I could ever give in a couple of sentences right here. There's a short... What do you got?
It's a presentation.
Okay. Small presentation, and then we'll all take a look and take a vote on that. You know, other than that, I need to have a... Make a motion to approve the 23, 24 Board of Education meeting dates?
So moved.
You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one. There's two July dates noted in there. Historically, we have not had meetings in July. Are they just in there for placeholders in case we need a meeting, or are we planning to meet in March?
They will be placeholders.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? So moved. May I have a motion to approve the formation of an ad hoc athletic committee of the Board to review and revise the current BOE policy 351... Sorry. 3515A, which is the community use of the school facilities?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to say I'll approach three members to try to get that committee going that has to do with the fees associated with town and non-town-related teams using our fields. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? So moved. All right. May I have a motion to create a path to belonging at the North Haven High School/North Haven Middle School campus? I get a second?
Second.
All right. Now for discussion.
Sure. Is somebody... Oh, Howard, thank you. Okay. If you can just advance one quick slide, thanks. So tonight, we're gonna talk just a little bit about why we're proposing a path to belonging, what exactly it is, the details and the planning, the proposed timeline, and the budget, of course. My favorite topic. So why would we be proposing a path to belonging? Right? So we have a unique take on DEI. Because of Patrick Lawrence, we have DEIB: diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And ensuring that all students feel like they belong at North Haven is really important. As such, we want to provide a visible reminder that every single student belongs here. You belong in North Haven, if you don't mind advancing. So Patrick Lawrence, when he came and presented a few meetings back, he said every child should feel like they belong in North Haven, and I think that's really important. So what is the path to belonging? Right? We have several hundred feet of paved sidewalk around the turf fields between the middle school and the high school campus. We'd like to have various North Haven school clubs, honor societies, athletic teams, groups submit proposals for small stretches of this path. The submissions would be approved by school administrators to just make sure that they're appropriate to be enshrined forever on our pavement, but we just want a visible reminder that every single student belongs here. So this would be, you know, Italian Honor Society could have a piece of it, the football team could have a piece of it, the diversity clubs could have a piece of it, Dungeons and Dragons, Ava, looking at you, could have a piece of it, too. We just want to make sure that every kid who comes to these schools realizes that we want you here and you belong here, if you don't mind advancing. So how would we make it happen? We would section off the path to belonging in relatively even sections. We'd have a welcoming message that said, "Welcome, you belong here," and then invite the North Haven Clubs, Honor Societies, et cetera, to submit this form. I have screenshots of all the questions that are asked on the form here, just for transparency sake. It's just, what's your organization? Who can we contact for questions? And then submitting an appropriate design, and then optional, what makes you feel like you belong? Just 'cause I like data, and I like to understand what makes people feel like they belong somewhere. We would roll out the painting in three different phases, 'cause on the prior slide, there were like three different sections. It's tough to see the numbers on there, 'cause it's kind of big, but there's... One is up top, two is along the left side, and then three is along the bottom. We've got plenty of room for absolutely everybody to participate in this. Thank you, Howard. I also linked to the Google Form in the presentation in case anybody would like to take a look at it. It basically recovers some of the things that we're talking about tonight and just has the questions on it. Here's an example of what we might want to put as our welcome sign. Maybe it's a nighthawk. I don't know. I would rather the kids do it than me. I do math for a living. I'm not a creative type. If you don't mind advancing. Okay. So timeline. So if we approve the idea tonight, we can distribute the Google Form to students and parents. We can select three designs for what I'm calling a proof of concept. It's a little corporate speak for us. These would be outlined and painted over the course of the month of July so that we can check to make sure that we're learning as we go and making sure that we have the right tools needed to execute on this flawlessly. In August, we would take the rest of Phase 1 designs that had been approved by administrators and get them painted, and then in September, students could return to a beautiful, visible reminder that they belong here at North Haven Schools. So budget. We did some research. The paint is about $700, rollers and brushes, tape and tarps. So I've been talking about this for about a month now, and several community groups have already offered to donate several hundred dollars in support of this effort. So it is a relatively small budget, but I'm pretty confident that we can get this covered by private donors should we choose to move forward with this. And that's really... That's really the whole presentation. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to talk through.
Before we get into questions, I'd just like to make a quick statement. About two months ago, myself and Amanda were having a conversation about inclusiveness and what it means and how best to present it in the school, and we came up with this idea. Now, this idea has been brewing for a couple of months without the knowledge of the rest of the Board. So I told her, just kind of keep it under her hat. I was gonna present it all at once instead of putting out bits and pieces. The thought that we have behind this is that anybody in this school, any group, club, team, anything that's approved, that meets, that is creative in this school, whether it's academically, you know, sports-wise, or any other way, can get their... Get themselves noticed on that sidewalk. So as the kids are walking back and forth between the middle school and the high school, they see this, and they understand. Football, fencing, pick one, chess club, anything. So that was the premise behind our conversation, and I'd just like to thank Amanda for taking her time to do something that I could never do. And I used to be able to do it while my kids moved out, so I can't do that anymore. So I would open it up to questions from the Board, and again, I would just like to apologize. It's not that we were doing it in secret. I wanted to make sure that we had it together before we ever presented it to anybody. Please feel free for any comment you guys might have.
So first and foremost, thank you both for your secret sessions, 'cause this is amazing. But I will speak up for the elementary babies once again. So there's not really... Is this intended just to be for middle school and high school or for elementary as well?
I was speaking to a mom at the elementary school. She actually came and talked to us several months ago, because her children are bilingual. They speak Portuguese, and she was saying that this would be a great opportunity to just say like, "Welcome, you belong," in Portuguese. And I think that that's a good idea. So I would like to broaden it to... In the presentation, it says, "All North Haven Public Schools." And I think it's appropriate to say, all North Haven public schools, as long as the administrators have the final say. We've got plenty of space, we've got lots of room, we've got lots of sidewalk.
So I guess my follow-up question would be, because the elementary schools, there's some clubs, I'm not fully familiar with everything that's happening at every school, you know, what would that, what could that look like? So I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity for all the elementary schools to be involved and, and feel that sense of belonging and inclusion.
For sure, yeah, I think that's a great point, Thais, and I think one of the ways that we can do that, we've seen elementary schools previously, like when we were looking at the mascot, right? The elementary schools got together and they each submitted a mascot for us. Sorry, I'm looking at you because you remember this.
That's correct.
But I think we could probably do something similar, because those, the little kiddos obviously belong here too. We want them to come to this campus in several years and be able to see the fruits of their labor and be like, oh, I remember that, I remember when I was into whatever, drums, I don't know.
Well, they also attend the games, et cetera, so.
Yeah, definitely.
So, thanks.
So, oh, Thais, are you doing?
I'm done.
Okay, okay. So Amanda, I have a question in terms of the selection process. So you had mentioned the administrator being the final say.
Yep.
So one of the things that happened with these kinds of good ideas is that when it comes down to the selection.
Yep.
You know, is it, yeah, exactly, is it a, is it a fair process in terms of, because you have so many interests, so many things that you can point to, just because of the composition of the high school and middle school.
Yep.
In terms of significance, if it's athletics, if it's heritage, if it's culture, you know, and different facets, you know, so in terms of selection process, you know, what's the, what's the process in terms of that, what's the composition, what, because that is something that's very important.
It is very important.
So people don't feel left out, and you're not relying on one person or two people to make that final decision.
I think that's a good point, Goldie, and in my mind, it's what makes you feel like you belong and what's like appropriate to have on a public school campus, right? Those are the criteria. In good news, we have several hundred feet, so, you know, I haven't done the exact measurements yet, but I'm thinking we have at least 30 available to, to be able to give off, and if we got 30 applications, that would be phenomenal. I would recommend that if we do get over 30 applications, submissions for the path to belonging, that we form a little committee, so that we do have some, we do have several folks taking a look at it, and making sure that there's some balance there, right? We want a mix of athletics, we want a mix of academics, cultural heritage, et cetera. Like, we want a good, good mix here, and we want to make sure that we are respecting the hustle for the kids who want to go ahead and, and fill out the form.
I think we can hunt down additional sidewalks if necessary, too, to make sure everybody's accounted for.
We do, we do have a lot of sidewalks.
Right, and, and one of the things, the way my thought process is going is that anybody who's already approved to have a club, have something sanctioned by the high school or middle school or grade school, they're, they're an automatic in. So I don't know how many you would really have outside of that, I'm sure you'll, I'm sure you'll get some, but like Patrick says, there's miles of sidewalk, and if you're already approved to be meeting at the, any one of the schools, then you shouldn't have a problem getting a spot. Other than that, that, that's where the debate would come in.
Yeah, so my, my concern was not more, my question actually, was not more in terms of space, it was just in terms of the selection process.
Right.
You know, so I think, you know, as we're looking forward to implementing this, is to think about and make sure that that selection process, you know, is, is balanced and there's a set criteria that each applicant has to meet. So you set for three, four criteria that they have to meet in order for them to be part of.
Considered, right.
Yeah, exactly, because if that does, if there's nothing that's clear, then there's, you know, conspiracy theories, and there's questions, and, and things like that. So if we have that set, that'll be nice. So it's not really, it's not really a space issue, I know we have tons of sidewalks.
Yeah, and that, and that's why I said, ones that are already authorized by the school, I was assuming that that process already had taken place.
Yes, yeah.
But we can, you know, that's something you can easily look at.
Okay.
No problem.
Existing clubs also have adults.
They have advisors.
Advisors, thank you, yes. Who I think, I don't, I don't want to add anything to these advisors' plates, however, I do think that if this is something that the clubs and groups and sports are interested in, I think this is something that their advisor could probably help guide them on as well. But really, like, in my mind, I don't want to be overly prescriptive about this, I think it's what makes you feel like you belong, and keep it appropriate. And like, we know, it can't be anything hateful, nothing that's like explicit, and otherwise, as long as it's appropriate for public school, I'm okay.
Melanie?
So just a couple of things, so, nice idea, right? The, I think the timeline, if we want to make sure that, you know, everyone is represented, like, we have, how many clubs, if we numbered off, how many?
Dozens.
So if we want to make sure that all these clubs have time to get their stuff in, and it goes through an appropriate decision process, I think this timeline is really short, especially because this is the end of the school year, next Friday, and then summer, a lot of people are away. So I, I don't think we should kind of rush this and try to push it through, rather take our time, make sure that it's appropriately, you know, reviewed, et cetera. I also just want to say that I know a lot of the schools do have, like, I'll put myself out here, but anytime I walk into a school, I always look for, like, my country's flag, right, to be represented, and I always look to see the welcome, because a lot of the schools already have, like, welcome in all the different languages, which is super cool, and I always look to make sure my language is there. So we, we are doing a nice job with making sure that those things are already out there, so I just did want to say that, so I think this is a nice addition. I just don't want us to kind of rush through this, and it would be really nice to see a focus on the path of belonging that's focused on the fact that, you know, some of our, you know, the, the fact that we're all part of North Haven and part of this community, and that this is, you know, the, you know, have some North Haven, either the NH or the Nighthawk, whatever, to just scattered throughout, to kind of unify everybody as North Haven.
If I may, just on the timeline, because I think that's a really good point, Melanie, the goal is to have three for a proof of concept in July, and then Phase One, which is only one part of the path over the summer, because I do think it's going to take kids and advisors and folks some time to get this done. I know that there are already several groups who have ideas of what they would like to do, and if, if we were to approve this, I think we would have some submissions pretty quickly. But I think doing it in three different phases gives us time to be, and doing a proof of concept first, gives us time to kind of be very thoughtful and prescriptive, to learn, like, how to best paint, like, what, how many people do we need to execute this, those kinds of things, and learn as we go, so that we can kind of.
Is this the first time this is being presented?
Yes. We can also talk about maybe July being pushed to August.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, that's not the end, that, that kind of timeframe is not to do or end all of this particular project, that was something that, you know, was just proposed as the idea of a flow. That flow can change, that, that part is very liquid.
I think we should look at some of those details.
Okay, all right, so, you know, at this point, how about we just make a change that the initial three, four, two, whatever we decide to be, won't be approved till August, which means the painting won't happen till August, it won't happen in July. So proof of concept would be pushed back a month, is that reasonable?
And are we going to have a committee, or we're saying we're waiting to have a committee for this?
I think we need to, like, assess how much interest there is.
Right.
So like, I think it's a cool idea, but I think lots of stuff is a cool idea, and I don't know if the kids will think it's a cool idea, right? So I want to just, like, I want to think that we're going to have a crisis of excess here, which would be great, that's a good problem to have, and then we can form a committee at that time, and, and, and go from there. I'm not sure that we're going to get 30 submissions.
That was, that was my thought, is I was afraid that we'd form a committee and get four applications, and then I'd be wasting everybody's time, when, you know, Patrick and the administration can look at those and just forward them to us for approval, instead of us having to get together and, you know, you know, go ad nauseam, Anna.
But there will be some sort of checkpoint before Phase begins.
Yes, oh, yes.
I guess what I'm just not clear on is who, who is that, that checkpoint in the, I think there, the way it's set up with that Google form, I don't have a problem with it, but it's so broad, and I understand that's part of, like, what you're going for, but I think there has to be some, like, some set approval criteria, and I don't mean like super specific, but I don't think it could just be like, okay, you fill out this form, every form is going to be super different and broad, which is fine, and it should be, right? But then that puts whoever the approvers are in a very difficult position, because they're getting hit with this multitude of information and whatever decision they make, and my, my expectation is like what Ron said, things are going to get approved, right? But there's going to be something that's, somebody's going to have some sort of issue with, and that may not get approved, and when you don't have some, just very basic approval criteria, it leads you to be, you know, arbitrary, capricious type of.
I get it, the, the approval criteria that I was using is that the group is already approved by the school. So as long as they stay. Or the, or the club.
Right, right.
The group, the club, the team.
Right.
You know, the band, are already been approved. So as long as they were within the realm of, you know, what they do and were already approved for, as they hand it off to the administration, it should be a fairly easy yes, or what are you doing, no.
As to the design itself?
As to, as to the design itself, because the clubs are, well, the clubs are already there.
Yep.
And the teams and whatnot are already there. So I didn't think that would be the issue. I didn't think content would be a big issue, that's why I would hand it right to administration to have them look, as long as it's within the parameters of what they're already approved to do, it shouldn't be an issue. It's when you step outside that, that we'd have to take a look and, and meet and make a decision.
I think as long as we have a process, and it's a clear process of, if it's already approved, these are the steps we take. If it's not already approved, these are the steps we take, I think that's right.
So here's an idea, like, why don't we, why don't we say, let's, let's solicit for proof of concept ideas?
Right.
So solicit for three to four, and then why don't we bring any that get approved back to the board in August, so that we can kind of see what people are doing?
I, I would say, why even limit it? Just put it out and see who, that might give us an idea.
Sure.
Of the number in total that, that's interested, and we just take it from there.
And then you could decide committee, no committee.
Right, right.
And I'm happy to put that together, too, I'm happy to take a look at soliciting donations for this if we need to, to adjusting the timeline, because I think Melanie has a really good point there, and if there's anything that we wanted added to the Google form as criteria, I think that's okay. Like, if we want to say, it makes you feel like you belong in this community, in North Haven. Because I think, I think that's a, that's something that we can for sure add.
I have a question. I have a question about the communication process. So first of all, I'll thank you, Ron and Amanda, for putting this together, it's an incredible project, really, really wonderful to see. So knowing that this is going to, for the whole thing to be completed, is going to take time, what is your communication to students? We're at the end of the year, summer's coming, are you, I'm sure, I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but are you putting together, unless you want to give me an answer tonight, are you putting together some kind of pathway? Because I can see this as an ongoing process, you know, it's something teachers can talk about in their schoolroom, hey, you know, parents, take a walk and look at our path of belonging, kids, take a look, maybe you'd want to do a square block, and why are we doing this, and why is this so important? So it's a great teaching moment, too, and so the communication around it, I think, is , is going to be crucial, and how do you build it so it stays in place?
I think that's a good point, Marie. So we have a deck in place, a presentation in place, we have a form in place, we need to make sure that we get approval from us before we can, like, actually start the communication process, though, you know? So from here, I think it's, it's up to, to our individual school administrators to decide, like, can they disseminate this information? I think people are probably watching at home right now, and they may have any number of reactions to this, but I think that will help us kind of gauge what that communication process looks like moving forward.
My thought is, from the individual school administrator to Patrick, and then to us if it needs to be disseminated, whether it's.
I think we can post the form on the website, we can put the deck on the website, and it lives there, so people know where to find it, and we can highlight it in some fashion, so that's where it lives, and the initial, you know, initial groups that, that reach out, we can take those first couple, but at least it's, it's there at all times, so we can continue the submission process.
And my guess is, this project is almost never-ending, between groups that come in, groups that end, you know, as things change, in two, 10, 20 years, you know, groups are going to come and go. So I, I think this is probably something that's going to be just a, a never-ending project.
I think that, I'm sorry, one more thing to say. I like that because it's a living project.
Right, it's like living art.
It's a living art project, but it also will have some history to it, how cool it will look like, if we have some blocks that are still out there in 10 years, so it's, it's just, it's a delight, thank you.
So in, I guess, the, for the August session, or somewhere in between this, between now and then, to also include what I didn't hear was the evaluation criteria that I think Goldie and Joe are both referring to. So just to put together a skeletal framework of what that is, because I think Joe was referring to the artwork itself, but I think it allows, it gives the administrators, it gives folks a kind of like a, a stopgap, if you will, so it's like, okay, this is what we're, this is how we're looking at it, besides the form, right?
Right.
So when I'm looking at it, this is, and this is how I'm reading it, right? And what to do if it's not approved, right? What's the, what are the next steps if it's not approved? And I know we're saying, you know, this is the next, but I think that should come with the, the next part of this discussion.
I think it should be like a negotiation, right? Instead of saying this is not approved, I think we should say, here are the reasons why we want this to be edited, if you can. Like, here's something that we're feeling a little bit uncomfortable about, can you work on this one piece here? Because like, I, if people take the time to put together something that makes them feel like they belong, I think we should have a conversation about how to make it work.
No, but I, I absolutely agree, I think we just need to.
Yep.
You know, when we come back with it, that it has, I think it'll make folks feel more comfortable to see what that evaluation criteria is.
And the process, like.
The process, the communication plan.
Well, you're going to, you're going to have basically three checkpoints, you're going to have the school administrator, and you're going to have Patrick, and then you'll have us. The thing, you know, the thing is, and within those checks, you're going to have, if there's an issue with appropriateness, you're, you'll have it found by one of the three, if not multiple of the three. And then instead of, you know, I would not want to tell these kids, you've been refused, I would say, listen, this, this isn't cool because whatever.
Yep.
And give them some guidance as to what they need to change, not so much to tell them how to change it, because that would be up to them. So, you know, there are some checkpoints already in place based on how we thought about it. I agree that, you know, the timeline is aggressive, and, which is fine, because it's better than being too drawn out. You can always draw it out, right? It's always tougher to compress it. So, you know, that we can move along, as far as the time, the timeline, you know, as far as, you know, in writing, well, you have to be able to prove this or that, I, again, I think they've already done it if they're accepted by the schools and already in progress, that that club, club, group, or team is already in progress. So I don't think there's too much to, to really look at in that aspect, it's more the artwork, which will be checked one, two, a third time.
It, it's the artwork as well as non-form clubs, but people that need to feel included in, in a sense of belonging, right?
Right, the ones that, right, the, the people or, or the clubs that are new that want to be a part of this have to be the process of going through and getting even approved from the very beginning. The other one won't be as difficult, because they're already approved, right? So they can move through a little faster through the checkpoints. It's, again, it's a work in progress, we're definitely not going to have all the answers. The only thing I, I can say is, you know, I could add into this very, into this motion very briefly, is just to make sure that we add checkpoints in the future to determine approval. I mean, I don't know how else you would want to word that, but I can just make the motion to say that, you know, we can create it with the, with needed added checkpoints to be determined in the future for approval, I mean.
And a skeletal framework.
Yeah, I mean, any, anything we approve can always be modified by vote in the future. But I think it's important to pass this so that we can get at least, you know, the concept going and the request out there to the students to see where we're at as far as. going and the request out there to the students to see where we're at as far as interest.
I would be comfortable if we, you know, what you said.
Okay.
But also the development of the clear process on how. So like to begin the concept is great. I think we just need to make sure that we develop the processes and they're clear.
So can I just.
With everything we do.
So we want, we want like the formal approval process, like a flow chart of the process and a skeletal framework for evaluation. If we get those two things, are we comfortable?
Yeah.
After we've seen them.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right, and then, right, you're going to see, then we'll, like anything else, we would go on, on that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, I'm not proposing this to be, to have it as an obstacle. I, I think anybody, like you said.
No, I don't think that at all.
If you can make, you know, make it as a club here, you should be able to say, we belong in this district because this is what we want painted there. I don't have, have a problem with that. I think it's easier for people who are proposing things and easier for people who are reviewing things, especially when the composition of the board changes, administration changes, although he's not allowed to leave, the superintendent could potentially change.
Denied.
If you have a structure in place, it just makes it easier.
Hundred percent.
For future generations as well.
Yeah.
So that, that was, and I think it's a great idea and thank you, both of you, for putting it before the board and for all the work you put in.
I just struggle with the qualifier of being an established club or having to be a club. Like I just want to make sure that that's not in the motion. Or, because not everything or everyone is going to have a.
Right, there needs to be two.
There needs to take, two pathways.
Right, okay.
Same, you know.
Yeah.
One pathway, but.
One hundred percent.
Right, I don't, I don't think that we, we mentioned anybody would be excluded, but their path would be more difficult than someone who's already approved as a club or group. Right, well, it would be more difficult, because the other ones really just, it, you know, I hate to say the word rubber stamp, but they're already approved by the school for what they do. So you're kind of getting it and saying, yeah, as long as the artwork's appropriate, we're good. Whereas the other, you're, you want to go through the whole process like you would for anybody coming here trying to start a particular club.
Yep. So what I can do, if, can I send this to Patrick to send out in a weekly update though? What I can do is put together two flow charts, one for existing groups and clubs, one for folks who do not have existing groups of clubs, of how the approval process would run. And the other thing I'll do is put together a skeletal framework for evaluation.
I'm all about piling up the work on Patrick. Let's go.
That's fine. And then once we approve it.
He's got a lot of free time.
Make it public so people can actually see it.
Yeah.
And Amanda, just a recommendation, Dr. Dali and his team are pretty good with their criteria. They're always approving and denying. I was just reading through the yearbook and the quotes are in there, so they have certain processes in place for, for those types of things. So he might be a good resource.
Do you mind if I reach out to him to help, to ask for some help on the, okay, cool.
And is Patrick Lawrence part of this communication plan? That he knows this is in place and that we're.
Well, if he does, then he will.
Got it.
So the sentence I would like to add to that motion would be to add checkpoints, to be determined to, I can't read my own handwriting, to develop an appeal, an approval process. Is that what we're looking for? So you're adding checkpoints to determine the validity of the application.
And development of the processes.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what I was, that's what I was saying checkpoint was.
Sure, yeah.
But in, in a shorter term, is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
Ron, Ron.
Yes, sir.
Quick question. I, I don't have a problem with the artwork or, I'm just thinking, some of the clubs in school have national affiliation or sponsored by national groups. What if that club wants to put a national insignia on? Do we want to avoid that?
Well, if, say it's National Honor Society, right? They're getting awards with that national insignia on it that's already approved by the school. I mean, but that's also part of the process of what we're talking about.
That's what I'm saying.
As far as checking everything that goes out.
If we use a logo, we should probably get authorization for it.
Yeah, because you've got the key club, you've got DECA, which has national affiliation and so on, which might be an issue for some people.
Yep. We can, we'll add that to the process flow.
Yeah.
All right, that'll be part of the process of, of looking pretty cool. All right, can I get a, a motion to, to pass it as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, so moved. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. May I have a motion to approve the extension of Superintendent Patrick Sturck's contract through June 30th, 2026?
So moved.
Second.
I told you guys to wait and then sweat it a little bit. Oh, man. That's how you play the game. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. I'm just kidding.
Thank you, Melini.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? So moved.
Thank you.
Very good. Very good talking. Okay, time for a report. Outstanding committees. Marty, does ACES have anything this month?
Yeah, ACES had a meeting last week. Basically, it was mostly boilerplate, the end of the year stuff. However, they did bring up Mill Road School, which is expanding some of their programs. One is in, with West Haven, New Haven, to get more, more participation, also out of water bearing. Special needs program and program with autism is being expanded. Bassett Street, the old school up there, they finally got title to the building. So they're going to start approving, going through that. The fields behind it are part of North Haven.
Tell them.
So they're, they're not touching the fields at all. They've applied for a couple of grants through ECA. They're hiring new teachers and they've had a couple of retirements. At the time, they were backing House Bill 5283, which is the full funding bill, which has passed. And their graduation program is, depending on the school, is June 7th to the 15th, because they have so many different schools and programs.
Nice. All right, thanks, Marty. Curriculum instruction and planning?
So, pardon me, we met before the meeting tonight. We were joined by Amy Alessi, who is the six of 12 CT coordinator. We learned about a digital resource that will be used. We approved it for a one-year pilot program. It's going to be used for the new career, eighth grade career exploration course. It's a, it's a great little program. It looks like it's something that's going to be very engaging and helpful for both our teachers and our middle school students. So it was a relatively short and sweet meeting. If I could just add one quick thing, I just wanted to share this with the board. Last week was Green Acres graduation and there were students who all gave speeches. I just wanted to share one quote from one of the students as he, he ended his speech by thanking the principal and the teachers for making him feel safe, respected and happy. And I got goosebumps when he said that at the graduation. I just wanted to share that because I thought it was very powerful for, you know, a 10, 11-year-old boy to kind of summed up what we're always shooting for as far as the board and the students, so.
Yeah, it's powerful for any student to say, but that's excellent. That's excellent. Thanks, Joe. Education Foundation?
They'll be meeting next week.
Okay. Policy?
No policies on the docket this month. I just want to thank the board for really getting through a lot of policies this, this school year. Many of our policies are, you know, dated back to 2015, 2017, and we hit a good number of them this year. So get ready for August and just thank you. It's important that we get these updated.
We're going to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder, the last three days of school are early dismissal days, so that's Wednesday, June 14th, Thursday, June 15th, and the last day of school, June 16th, are all early dismissals. Elementary will dismiss at 1:00 PM, middle and high at noon. And just to close out the year, I want to share a few highlights, a few successes from each of the departments and, and schools. I'm actually going to start with special education. So the, the special education staff, the PPS staff, the support staff at all the schools really worked diligently to adopt the new CT SEDS program this year that's replacing the IEP Direct across the state. We're not the only district that's adjusting to this change. And it's really quite an undertaking for them, so I just wanted to recognize them that they really worked, worked very hard to, to tackle all aspects of it. Some IT successes this year. We implemented the 911 inform system, which sends text messages and alerts to school administration as, as well as the PD in case of emergency. The middle school received a new phone system this year. I know these are little things, but they're big deals to us. New phone system put every school system, every school building on the same line, which is really important. So as, as far as emergency calls go, so we're not on two different systems. New Wi-Fi finished up in November and we installed two smart AEDs at the athletic complex and the turf field. They are accessible to any person in the community and they're, they're actually pretty interesting. They have a heating system in it, a cooling system in it. They'll take your picture if you open it up and they call the PD. So we're happy that it's for our students and for the community as well. At Green Acres this year, teachers in grades K through five worked to meet their school goal, their school I-ready goal of 80, 80, 80, which is 80% or more of students meeting their weekly usage expectations, 80% of the students passing and 80% or more learning, learning, I'm sorry, 80% or more of the learning path lessons in reading and math. They're making great progress there, so they were really, really excited that they wanted to share that with us. This year, the STEM excitement expanded exponentially with the new shift into the STEM Unified Art classes. And there are many end of year celebrations at Green Acres and they're really excited about their 25-year time capsule that they're going to be, no, I think they just did put it in the ground. So. Manoise, they read 12,600 books this year in their school-wide reading challenge. They established a buddy, buddy mentor program in place with a social worker to pair older students with younger students. And they have math cards there for each grade level to rotate and use with supplemental materials. At Clintonville, they implemented a new phonemic awareness program. And at the beginning of the year, the kindergarten students scored 14% proficient. They left kindergarten with a 92% proficiency rate. Fifth grade students at Clintonville averaged 137.5% growth towards their annual growth target based on their I-ready math scores. And they were just recognized by the North Haven Police Department and presented with a certificate for ongoing support of Special Olympics torch run. That was just this past Monday. Ridge Road had significant academic gains in SRBI. They averaged two to three events a month where the community and families were welcomed back into the buildings. And they had multiple fundraisers and money was raised for Ukraine, cancer research, children's hospital and earthquake relief funds to Turkey. At the middle school, all departments and grade levels worked to write and align curriculum across the department. They're aligned to state standards as well as the North Haven vision of a graduate. Also, the middle school students received both Tier Two and Tier Three support in reading and math and executive functioning. Science teachers have successfully implemented two units per grade of the new Open SciEd curriculum. It's actually the state, the state curriculum for science. At the high school, there's strong, ongoing curriculum at development. We're doing both at the middle and high now. And the coordinators and the teachers have been really working quite diligently to, to tackle this throughout high school two years, middle school this year, so. Real-world experience for students at the high school, including internship programs, culinary catering program, and that's in conjunction with our accounting students and the North Haven Collective where you can get all the North Haven gear that the students are, are making for us. And there are thriving extracurriculars at the high school, dozens of clubs, honor societies, great theatrical performances this year, including Newsies, art recognitions, congressional art awards. And it was our biggest art beat turnout in history this year, as well as two state championships, one in football and one in hockey. And also, I forgot to mention the wrestling program, which really took off this year as well. So that is kind of synopsis.
Girls rugby first year as well. Yeah. So, well, before you even continue, what I would like to do, I would really like to thank you and the rest of the administrators, the teachers, any student that comes in to help. I mean, it's been a tremendous amount of activity and a lot of success throughout all of the school levels. I know we've come here and we talked about problem here, problem there, but if you just listen to that list and think about the tremendous amounts of growth in so many different areas, you could be nothing but proud of the job that you guys did. So I pledge both. You really did a great job. You know, moving forward, yeah, we expect the same. That's all I can say. We expect the same. And I'm sure, I'm sure we'll get it.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. You all done with your report?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Melinda?
This month, I just wanted to provide the board with a quick update in regards to the science of reading that we had talked about in February. As you know, we submitted our waiver back then. And at this time, the State Department has just solidified an agreement with an outside organization which will be doing the scoring. So, long story short, it's in a bit of a holding pattern right now and it appears that the legislation will extend the timeline. So we anticipate hearing something maybe at the end of June, probably more realistically July or August, so I will circle back as I learn more. And on a related elementary literacy note, the state has just released a grant called Write to Read Grant. I'll be working to submit this grant application with Tracy Gamberdella over the summer. And it appears that we can write for $59,000 to use for supplementing K3 literacy initiatives. So that's a nice opportunity. And as a district, we are pursuing three additional grant opportunities. One is the supplemental competitive Perkins Grant, which will be used for career and technical education enhancements. Amy Alessi has submitted this one and we are waiting to hear back. A new competitive grant was just released for dual credit expansion opportunities, which we have spoke about at a previous meeting where I showed you the AP and the dual opportunities. I'm in the process of writing this one. That is due on July 17th. And lastly, I submitted a competitive Title III immigrant grant to gain some additional funding for our growing multilingual population. As of today, we have 179 English learner students across our six schools and I just received notification that we were awarded $6,000. So we'll be able to utilize that to get more supports for next year.
That's awesome. Any questions from the board? Howard?
Thank you. As you, in your report, you saw that I provided the last final forecast where, right now, we are projecting that the unutilized funds will be approximately $265,000. Just to remind you again, we do have the MOU now with the town and if you, I will recommend in August, whatever that balance ends up being at the end of the year, that you would approve that going into the non-lapsing fund. That can then, you can then vote on to how, how you will reallocate that to whatever you like to use it for. I also included the monthly transfer reports. We're providing your package, so at this point I'll stop because again, I don't know how many questions you have about the budget, the projected forecast, or those transfers.
So several lines in the budget, and they, they've been this way for a little bit, are, the commentary states that we are under budgeted due to lack of bus monitors. Knowing that these positions are employed by North Haven schools as opposed to M&amp;J, do we have a plan for next year? Like, are we in good shape from a bus monitor perspective for next year?
We are not.
We are not.
No. M&amp;J handles the hiring of them even though they're employed by us.
Oh, interesting.
Yes.
I didn't realize that. So is M&amp;J actively recruiting?
They are. They're, just the same way they're recruiting. They've actually gotten more monitors recently than they have drivers. They've actually gotten more monitors recently than they have drivers.
Can you help me understand the logic behind having M&amp;J hire for positions that we?
Pay for.
So, that's a very good question. Historically, that they've been in charge of that because it's, the van monitors are following protocols that M&amp;J puts into place because they know how to run the routes and what's expected to care for the students during that time. They've been charged with hiring the monitors. Now, Howard and I have met with the monitors once or twice this year. We check in with them. They talk with us. So, we do have a finger on them, but as far as the hiring process goes, it goes through M&amp;J.
Is there a policy in place that delineates the roles and responsibilities of day-to-day management of these folks to M&amp;J?
There is not. Not, not a board policy, no.
Okay. So do we have latitude to be able to, like, I'm not saying we should do this, but should we want to recruit for additional bus monitors and have M&amp;J maybe help vet for qualifications and help train, but have like us ultimately do the hiring? Is there, is there like a, a good reason why we're not doing that right now?
There's not a good reason. However, I mean, we could take it and do that, but they're in that field per se. So in theory, I mean, it hasn't paid off because they're short monitors, but they should be able to attract monitors and drivers better than we would be able to. So that's why we work in conjunction with them in that.
I may or may not disagree with that last statement also because I think we have a multitude of parents that may or may not be working or may be willing to be on a bus because they'd be with their child or someone else. So, you know, maybe we can get something out to the parents, at least a notification that if they're interested and that we can point them in the right direction.
We do, we have it up on our website. We've had it on one of those flashes when you click on the website that has stayed there. And M&amp;J has said to us that we advertise the best out of any of their, any of their yards.
Maybe we should do it as an attachment. Just a thought, you know, maybe an attachment.
My other question is around capital, right? So thank you for breaking out the capital encumbrances. I know that we had just under $200,000 in like high priority capital items. Is there any thought to taking on additional capital projects if we turn and find ourselves with some unused funds before now, between now and the end of the year? And we've got like six.
So between now and the end of the year, it's not, it wouldn't be possible to, to, to cycle them up, right? To get them in place, to get the bids, to get everything done.
It is a big project.
These are big projects. They're not, it's not something, it's not an expense like fix a HVAC or something real quick, right? It's a big project. So yeah, there's no way that we could get it now between now and the end of the year and get those done.
And have we communicated with the Board of Finance? I know that we gave them, when we submitted our budget, we gave them all the capital projects that we were looking to have done prioritize, in priority order. I think we've made a couple of adjustments since then based on additional needs. Has that been communicated to the Board of Finance?
It has not since, since we made those adjustments, no, it has not been. They have the original list of the capital projects. They have, they do not have the adjusted list, right? Where we've added a couple of projects to that. One of the things that we have, that will have to be done when, if, when and if we move the money over into that non-lapsing fund is you, they would like, part of the MOU stated that you, they have to provide not a list, but an idea of what you're going to use those funds for. You can say capital projects, you can say Fed Reserve, whatever, whatever the board chooses to do to allocate that or to you, to think about using that for it, that's what we have to tell them at that point in time. It doesn't have to be like explicit projects, it just has to say a capital project.
Right, as just a title, right?
It's a generic, very generic.
But we have that available. We have available like itemized list as priorities, ready to go.
They have that list, they have the original list, they just don't have the most amended one.
Sure, okay. Thanks.
I'll just continue on. So, non-operating budget items. April P&amp;L for the cafeteria fund showed a profit of $113,000. And the food service director has informed me that May was a record month from a point of view of sales. They couldn't believe how well he did. He's talking in the range of like about $85,000 to $90,000 in profits. So that's going to add to that $113,000 for May. Again, all of this can be utilized for various things, whether the board chooses, if the equipment purchases, the upgrades to things in the cafeteria, it has, it has to be cafeteria related, so, and we'll, we'll talk about that. Capital projects had no changes. In your package, you received this, it's called Wellbeing Solutions. It's one of, we are implementing a new wellness program that will allow employees who participate in the district's medical plan to earn incentives up to $200 annually for completing proactive wellness procedures. One of, the key thing here is that there's actually no cost to the district for this. If you recall, a while back when we, when I talked about the renewal with Anthem, Anthem's giving us these wellness dollars that we will be utilizing to pay for this program. So it's, it's a way of being proactive when it comes to the medical side. Because again, we are self-insured. And so if we can, if you can get people to go and take, do these procedures such as like an annual physical or a colonoscopy or something like that, you can catch something early on enough that it then will cost us, cost the district less in medical costs as opposed to being reactive. So I think this is a great program that we're going to implement, and it'll be, and it's a great value to the employees. Questions?
Yes, I do. So, so this is great. I just have a couple of questions. I don't think I was here during the renewal process, I thought I was, I wasn't aware. But what do we have in terms of our full wellness funds with Anthem?
I'm sorry?
Our full wellness funds with Anthem.
With how much do we have?
Yeah.
So it's about $55,000.
Okay. And so, is there an opportunity in terms of kind of negotiating with Anthem as it relates to, so I understand this program is available, but you know, offering onsite biometric screening, so you know, staff don't have to leave to get some of these tests. That is something that we kind of bring into them to, you know, to look into a healthier health.
I can ask that question?
If we can ask that question as well as opportunities for spouses and dependents, right? Your staff may be the healthier folks on your plan and we want to.
So for this program, this is spouses and?
It includes spouses and dependents.
Yes, it does. It's anyone who takes our medical plan. Again, so it's not the employee, any employee who doesn't take that, doesn't participate in this. But if you do, if you participate in the family, everyone in the family gets, can be participating in these, these incentives.
And who's handling the education to employees as well as spouses and dependents?
It's going to be Anthem, Anthem's going to do it directly. And one of the things we try and do is, Anthem has wellness letter, well, monthly wellness newsletters. And so I try and send those out to all employees, not just, because we also have, I think you were here for, we have an EAP program as well that we also utilize. And we send out both wellness programs from Anthem, wellness newsletters, and we also send out the EAP program to, that's for all employees, whether you participate in medical or not. So, again, it's trying to help everyone through. It's been a very difficult time, both physically and mentally. So again, we're just trying to give them as many options as they can to stay well.
I think this is a great opportunity to supplement the Anthem materials because a lot of us take a look at this stuff and we're like, oh, it's just another communication, another EOB, what have you. But it's an opportunity maybe to have a custom communication from, from the town, just as from the town, from Board of Ed to, you know, to kind of announce the program and remind them what was available for.
And just to be clear too, I know you weren't here last year, but we also, in the teacher's contract, we also added in there the incentive for, for a teacher and their, and/or their spouse, they get $100 for themselves and $100 for their spouse to do an annual physical. So that's, that's on top of this, right? So they can get that and then they can double dip here and get something else if they go through these other procedures. Because again, we're trying to, again, I love to be proactive, right? Because I think that's the best way to be, especially when you come to medical. Because if you can catch something early enough, it's going to be a lot better for the employee and it's going to be a lot better for, for the district from a cost perspective.
Let's just look at the take-up rate on that, on that incentive, right? Because it may be there and people are getting their physicals and not aware of it, but, or they may.
At the end of the day, what is going to happen is Anthem has, it's going to have the codes, right? They're going to see an annual physical and they're going to provide, so in August, they're going to provide me a list of everyone that got an annual physical. And what we're going to do is we're going to put that money right into, into their HSA.
Oh, awesome.
So that's the way it's going to work. So if the employee doesn't have to.
Doesn't have to do anything.
It doesn't have to do anything. They just have to go for the physical and then it'll be, however the insurance codes are, I know you're familiar with this and I am, but the codes will automatically.
Automatically goes into their HSA funding.
We'll put the money into their HSA.
Awesome. Thank you for bringing that up.
This will not be HSA, this will be direct, a direct, again, this will be a direct dollar stack to them. But again, it's, it's two programs that we have work, that we're working with now.
Great, thank you so much.
Reserve accounts. So reserve accounts currently medical is at 120% of the year in midpoint required by actuaries. But again, I think as claims go through this month in June, we're probably, I'm projecting that we're going to end up about 101%. So still in good position, still well-funded. Workers' comp is also up slightly from last, last month at about $678,000. That's in good shape. The Fed Reserve is being utilized due to legal fees and most likely by the end of, once I get the May bill in, that $85,000, I have the incorrect balance in my report, it's $85,453, that will be gone by the end of this, by the end of May. And then capital projects has remained unchanged, nothing, we still have $67,000, but with all the encumbered projects, it'll be down to $9,500 by year end. No change in federal grants other than all the grants that we have received, which is the excess cost grant. Some of the other ones have been applied and that's why I was able to, that's why we have a more accurate, what I believe is going to be a more accurate response, budget forecast. And then my final topic, although I know the board has voted and approved the policy, the ad hoc committee for the, to review the Board of Ed Policy 3515, there have come, some questions have come up that I know it's going to take time for the board to review that, but I would like to get some guidance, specifically I believe Amanda and Randy, you were on that committee in 2018. So I was hoping you'd be able to guide me on this one because I have to still administer it as we go through until the board reviews it and approves it. So, I can put the questions in the report, but I'll just reiterate them here. With respect to the turf fields in the athletic complex, was the intent of the $10 or $20 per athlete fee per season to cover all costs, including the weekend costs for custodians and grounds crew to maintain and clean up the turf fields in the athletic complex?
From what I remember, for town teams, yes.
So for like the youth soccer, you, so, okay, so.
Yeah.
Part of the, the way, the way the policy was written, or the way, at least I had the hard copy that I had found in my office when I first came in, was actually, it has that in there, but then it had on discounted custodial fees. And so it was a little, I was charging discounted custodial fees to these groups. And I just, and they came back and said, three, three of the people I spoke with, Phil, Diana being one of them, who were also on the committee, said that that wasn't what was intended. So I just wanted to clear.
I would say that if you have notes that you need to refer to, because it was so long ago, that you, you don't have to give an answer today. That's exactly what that means, is you can refer to those notes and then get back to Howard.
Yeah, I can definitely look, but, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that.
You can give your opinion, but as you look at notes.
Yeah, I'll go back and look. I just, you know, one of the reasons why we did the $10 and we didn't go extreme with funds was because they're North Haven residents. So, we wanted them to be able to access the fields, but we also wanted to kind of make up for a little bit of the maintenance that would be required based on all of the hours that the fields would be used. We definitely did not break even. We know we're not make, we don't want to make money off of North Haven residents. We definitely didn't even break even, but at least it would contribute to the cost of the maintenance. And that was the premise behind it. I do remember that we went back and forth because we looked at what other towns have done for their residents, for their resident town teams, like North Haven lacrosse, for example, like youth lacrosse. And they charge an extreme amount of money, that if we charged our leagues, that it would be ridiculous. So, I know we kind of went away from that and that's how we went to the $10 per player per season. But I will definitely look in if I can find.
Okay.
I checked my notes too. And like, that's what I had in my notes, was $10 per player per season for town teams.
Right.
So like, folks who are associated with North Haven, it does not apply to for-profit teams or for folks who are from out of.
Right, travel teams, any kind, right.
But those were $10 per player per season. And so like, in the case of soccer, that would be spring season and fall season.
Which was my next question, is what is, what defines a season? Is it the spring and fall, or is it spring is one season, fall is another? So you're saying it's a calendar year basis?
That was what was in my notes. My notes was like, spring season was one, fall season was another, when it was something like soccer. Because I think the leagues charge for spring season and fall season, and I think we, we, I think.
Yeah.
I had it in my notes, that we said that was probably reasonable.
So, okay, so it's for both?
It's for, one charge for spring, one charge for fall.
So we separate seasons?
So it's separate by season.
Not entire calendar?
It's per child, per season.
Perfect.
Right, so like every time they would pay a registration fee?
Yep.
The teams are expected, or however they want to do it. But thinking that they would just tack on $10 and that would be the $10 that we would use for the maintenance for the field.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then Howard and I charging the custodial fees is not for us to make money, it was actually us to try and break even.
Right, yeah, right.
And even with the discounted, we're not even covering our costs, the discounted rates because the rates haven't been updated since 2015, but salaries have continued.
I get, but we still need to do whatever that committee approved at the time.
No, absolutely, yeah.
And I know you get that, I know you get that.
Can I ask a question or no? Because the policy isn't on the agenda. So, if a team pays the $10 per player per season, it gives them unlimited access to that field for practice and games, or they pay per game, or per practice?
Unlimited, so whatever, because every league allows like for a certain amount of practices or games per week. And so whatever that is, they would get the use of it as long as it was cleared, through the park and rack. The head of the park and rack would talk to Steve Blumenthal because school teams would have priority of field use. If the field was available and it was a town team, they would get to use it all day long if they wanted to use it all day long. If there were like 10 games on a Saturday. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's it? Okay. I don't want to cut you off this.
No, that's okay.
Oh, boy. May I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report, including the recommended transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? So moved. Okay, now we move on to public comment. This session of public comment is reserved for agenda items, and agenda items only. So if you have an agenda item you'd like to discuss, please step to the mic and sign your name, say your name, we'll be good.
Anna 1020 Alexander. Patrick, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I just want to say something to Amanda as well, or I should say to the Democratic Party, who would be remiss to not vote you back in. We don't agree on everything. Sometimes I come with you to questions, I come to the board with questions, and Amanda always gets back to me and she will always find the answer for me. So, I hope you're back.
Thank you.
A couple of things. I want to talk about the fields first before I forget. So, it's $10 per student, as you were saying. However, the soccer club has been being charged, or has been charged $400 per game. And we don't get unlimited access to that field. There's 20 kids on the team. There's no custodian that ever shows up.
Well, no, so first of all, this custodian fee is going to go away. The money that they would charge, Jennifer Dierin has already, I've already talked to her about this.
Okay.
They're going to get reimbursed.
Okay.
All that money back, it's going to go back to them now because we had, that we had charged them. Because again, now that the policy has been clarified.
Okay.
Or what the intent of the policy was. So all of that custodial fees is going to be reimbursed, it's back to them.
Okay, great.
But they are not charged per game. They were charged a flat fee, $10 per, per thing, and I believe it was 800, they have four teams, forced 20, I forget, it was like $400 or something like that, is, and that was, they were allowed to use it for as long as they wanted to for this season. So I don't know.
Okay. We were told it was custodial fees and we're like, we never saw anybody there.
Well, yes, there was custodial fees involved. So you got one invoice, as I recall, I created the invoice. So it's, I recall we had, there was two, there was two sections of it and one, a part of that was, yeah, the larger fee of that was the custodial fees, but they're getting that money back now. So that's why I need the clarification from the board.
Okay. And then, um, I have a comment about the path to belonging or, or some questions maybe. I think it's a great idea. I think it's really cute. It would look beautiful. But I, I do think that it's yet another, um, it's yet another way for a child not to feel included. Because, um, they may not be in a club, they may not be on a team. And I'm thinking of a particular child who, you know, these are the kids that are very quiet. They fly under the radar and, um, they behave, you know, they're good kids. They're just not part of anything. And they don't feel like they belong. So it would be yet another thing where these kids would feel like they don't belong. Because we're asking groups and teams and, um, organizations, you know, these kids belong to, to put together these, you know, what they want on these paths. But what about those who are not part of a team or a group or a club? I just, it just hit me knowing that there are kids that don't belong to anything. And, um, so anyway, just think about that.
I think it's a really good point. We'll have to figure some, that's a good point. And we'll have to figure something out for that. I think, I think that can be resolved pretty easily.
And then, um, I was thinking, let me see, so we could, um, oh, would the path be inside the new six-foot fence? Or is it outside?
Outside. It's, it's on the sidewalks, right? So.
Is that, is that going to be outside?
I think that's, I think that's.
It goes around, doesn't it?
You, you're talking about the new fences that will be going up? I think it'll be on the outside.
The path will be on the outside?
I think so. I think they're going to put the fences like close, they may actually have to pull up some of the path in order to make it happen. So now that you've brought that up, we need to make sure with the construction that nothing is dug up.
We'll just have new.
Fair point. We don't want to have any.
We'll fix it.
And I'm also thinking if it's outside after hours, you know, kids can mess it, mess with it.
Inside too, though, in all reality, right?
Six-foot fence they can get in. I mean, yeah, they can climb it, but.
If you're determined, you will. But I get you, I get your point 100%. I get it.
Thanks.
Thanks, appreciate it. Anybody else? Almost, you say almost.
I'll let you guys finish up in a bit. Um, so I wanted to applaud as well the path to belonging. I think it's a great idea. Um, two things that were running through my mind that I think you guys sort of discussed that like, kind of danced around it. I just wanted to like make them sort of explicit. You know, I think the review process should make sure that it goes through many eyes just because there's so much, you know, internet slang that like changes weekly. There's like, you know, different messages. Somebody is going to be a smart ass and they'll think that they're so clever and they're going to try to sneak something in there and then it's on our sidewalks, like every day that kids passing. We just want to avoid that situation. Um, the other thing is, you know, diversity is such a wide breadth of, you know, it covers so much territory. Um, and I think there's, you know, there's one diversity club at the high school. There's like a diversity club at the middle school that's like a preemie right now. And I would just want to make sure that like all of the students that are covered under that broad group, you know, whether it's, you know, you know, three Muslim students or something like that, or whether it's, you know, like, um, you know, Hispanic students at the school, you know, we don't just give like one spot to diversity while, you know, every single.
All clubs of every school.
Yeah.
Teams, organizations, clubs. And then as Anna said, we have to.
The diversity club.
Right, as.
And people.
And people. I mean, I don't know how, yes, people.
Yeah.
Anybody, as Anna was saying.
So as long as there's kind of like a, something carved out for that in terms of like other students that want to come in. If they had like any kind of special, you know, interest that they're into or, you know, like after-school activity, I'm sure we can make room for, you know, whatever, whatever the kids are into. I did, just want to like stress like why stuff like this is important. I was going to say something that was very similar to what Mrs. Swanson said before about how, you know, after the flag raising ceremony, um, some of the kids came back from the middle school and were sort of like opening up. It was like very disheartening. Um, I was upset to see that. Um, and I think it's just, you know, it, it's unfortunate that kids are coming with kind of like this hatred that they're bringing from their homes and leaving in the schools. I don't think it comes necessarily from the kids, but it just does stress the, the, the need for more interventions like this. Not only more of them, but, but earlier within their education too. So I hope to, to see more of this stuff, uh, going forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I promise.
No, you, speak your piece. You don't have to rush.
Hi, my name is Brandy Mandato. Um, I'm at, do I say my address? 56 South Avenue. Um, this is my first time speaking at a Board of Education meeting in North Haven. I am the parent of two children in the district, three nephews and one niece. My daughter starts kindergarten in the fall and I have been practicing watching buses drive by and not crying. I feel like I'm real close to making that happen on August 28th. I want to thank you for the incredible service, uh, public service you provide to our community, to the leadership you provide. Um, I was sitting at home watching with my two daughters. My husband was working in the city today and I didn't think he was going to get home in time. And when I saw the presentation on, uh, the path to belonging, I had two little kids. One was, um, talking with her dinosaurs. The other one, um, was, uh, throwing things at the window, but like in a sporty way. So, um, I saw this and I thought, we have no idea what they're going to be. I have no idea what they're going to be into. And what an incredible thing, blocks from my house, to be able to take my children down a path for our night walk, where they get to see a little bit of everything, where they get to see North Haven represented in a Nighthawk or an NH, where they get to see all their options for sports, where they get to see clubs and groups of kids that are coming together and do things that are interesting and fun and different. And so this just seems like such a beautiful concept. I really appreciate the way that I got to hear, uh, how this body makes decisions and, um, bounces ideas off of each other and challenges points of view. Um, I'm just, I'm really grateful that when that bus stops at my house on the 28th, that this group or very similar to this one will be leading the, the charge for the school that they walk into. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Dancer, 6010 St. Avenue. I just want to say this is about the most amazing idea ever, right? So our kids, you know, I've had two kids, one graduated from this district, another one's still in high school. You know, kids don't know what they want to be, right? Where they fit, where they belong, right? You know, the idea that your parents are two athletes and you assume that your kids are going to be athletes and then all of a sudden, you know, one kid says, hey, you know, I want to be an astronaut or I want to be, you know, an NFL player or, you know, just trying to find their way in the world. And just for them to just even play on that soccer field and just look over and say, I can play soccer and be, and Dungeons and Dragons, right? You know, these are those, these are those opportunities that we have to say to our kids, you know, this is where we go from here. This is how we, you know, you know, when we grew up, it was always like the athletes stuck together, the artsy kids stuck together. This is that opportunity to say, look, we all blend together. We exist in the same space and let's learn how we interact with each other. You know, a kid might say, oh, I don't even know what club to join. And then all of a sudden is playing on that soccer field and says, oh, look, that looks like it's interesting. Maybe I should look into it, right? And, you know, and just representing every culture, every nationality. You know, um, you had mentioned, you know, let's say welcome in every language, you know, the North Haven, you know, the whole United States is really blended with lots of different languages. And, you know, kids come to this country, right? And, you know, the first thing they learn to say is, you know, hello. You know, even just saying hello in all those languages there, you know, will be impactful and every kid here will feel like they belong. So I thank Amanda for that amazing idea and working with Ron, right? You know, and I think, you know, as a board, you guys can really do something great for this community. And it's a really good way to show our kids what a sense of community is. So I thank you all for that. And with that, I'm leaving because I know everybody wants to go home.
Hello?
Uh, hi.
Yeah, right. You don't have to give your address.
Oh, okay. Um, I'm Ava. I'm a sophomore at the high school and I am in a lot of clubs. I founded, co-founded Dungeons and Dragons Club. I'm the vice president of Video Game Club. And I'm also in improv and writing club. Um, it's a lot of clubs, but they're all a lot of fun. And it's all a big community of people who, when you see the flyer for your club in the hallway, it's really, uh, amazing moment where you could look at like something you're a part of and you could feel like you belong. So I think that this is an amazing idea just because being able to walk outside the school and see your club written down on the ground, it really brings a sense of like belonging, like I did this, I'm a part of this.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Anybody else? All right. Well, before I ask for a German, I would just like to thank again the board for a, a really fantastic school year. There's a lot accomplished. I would like to thank the public for staying in tune and not being afraid to call and speak your piece. And to everyone else at this table for all their hard work. I appreciate it. May I have a motion to adjourn the June 8th, the June 8th, 2023 regular meeting of the Board of Education? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Have a great summer, everybody.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven.